Let me know if the Shreveport City Council has not been called to order. We will have invocation by Mr. Jerome Cox and Councilman Butcher will lead us with the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you today for this incredible council, Lord. We ask that you would continually grant them the strength, the wisdom, and the insight, God, to make wise decisions for our community. We trust this council and we trust the guidance of it because you are an awesome God and we trust you for all of the things that are ahead of us. Why? Because today is a good day. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, if you'll face the flag and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Cox. Madam Clerk, we call a roll, please.
Councilman Flaherty.
Present.
Councilman McFlure.
Present.
Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Flure.
Here.
Councilman Gorton.
Here.
And Councilman Booth.
Here. There are motions to approve the minutes.
So, uh...
Second.
They're moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher to approve the minutes from Monday the 12th and Tuesday the 13th. Please vote. Motion carries with seven. First, I'd like to call up Mr. Savant and any other council members that may have other distinct guests or someone. If you can get your microphone so we can, either one. There you go.
I think, uh, test, check test? Okay.
Gotcha.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. I come before you today to speak on three specific issues, the first of which is a bit of a status check on the legislative request concerning taxis or non-folding wheelchairs as a matter of urgency for, for true parity and equality and freedom for all people who are reliant on assistive devices. Number two, to thank you all from the meeting that you were kind enough to allow me to phone into. I had an opportunity to see how this town really works. I was blown away by this, by the gravitas that you all, excuse me, to our concerns. And finally, to pay homage to Cedric, who I only met a few weeks ago. And he reminded me that if I am not part of solutions, I am the problem. If it looks like I dressed myself today, it's 'cause I did. You know, I don't have any help today. But if I had a cab, I could take my own stuff to the cleaners. You know what I mean? So, in honor of this council, thank you for the opportunity to address you yet again. In honor of Mr. Murphy, who, who is an exemplar, who showed me what this town is truly all about underneath all of the candy coating and the bad impressions, I am honored to be able to address you today. I thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, our speaker asked a question about the status of legislation that was discussed recently that might impose additional requirements on ride-sharing services like Uber and Lyft to require them to provide additional services to handicapped persons. I fully support legislation of that nature and I feel confident that all members of the council do as well. I will note that in June of this year, Governor John Bel Edwards signed into law legislation that may, may limit our ability to impose additional requirements on Uber and Lyft at a local level. We're studying that. If that legislation allows us discretion to, to require them to do more than they're doing for handicapped persons, I think we'll certainly do that. But our hands may be somewhat tied by that and we may have to look to the state for implementation of regulations like the ones that have been discussed here. So, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. If I may just follow up, there are a number of paratransit companies that are on demand apart from the commercial Uber and Lyft that have the infrastructure in place that could easily plug and play here.
And I would be delighted to have any guidance or input you would, would offer us because you know, may know more about this than, than we do, than I do certainly. So, thank you for being willing to help.
My privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Savant.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Is that, uh, Councilman McFlure?
Mr. Savant, I just wanted to say thank you for coming today and I'm glad that you had an opportunity to speak now and that you did pay homage to, to Mr. Murphy. And I just want to say it's just, the chamber's just not the same and it won't be the same without him here. And we're all gonna miss having his voice here and I'm really glad that you, that you've come today to champion his causes because they are all of our causes.
To, yes ma'am, and to the extent that I am able, I realize I can never fill his shoes, but for every second that I am hosted by this community, I will do everything I can so that his works do not fall through the cracks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Green.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman and to the council and mayor, on a part of my crime package that I have, it has to do also with cleaning up our city and making our city better. And I have today Ms. Donna Curtis is gonna come and also Mr. Washington to give us an overview of some things that we are putting together that Resolution 112 has to do with. So, Donna, would you all come up and these two people are complete geniuses in this and so, Ms. Dunn, Mike, is your, whoever wanna go first? Ms. Dunn, you can go first.
I'm not really sure. Thank you, Reverend Green. We were contacted by Reverend Green last week and he's very interested in putting forth the, a resolution to reassert our dedication to a clean city. This past weekend, we had a huge turnout, a wonderful event for the whole city and it was so glad to see so many of you there and thank you so much. This ordinance would put, would lay out some of the things that we are specifically, we discussed at our meeting, which would include Sportran and an adoptive, adoptive spot with the Sportran bus stops and talk about some of the things that we've been discussing over the last several years. So, thank you Reverend Green for bringing this.
Also, would you just touch on the part about the person that, the organization that possibly could come here to talk about why people litter, about the cigarette butts?
We have a social psychologist that will be coming to Shreveport with one of our programs in the next several months and we're hoping to get him to look at Shreveport and give us some feedback on how to reach some of the people we haven't been able to reach in the last 25 years. Hopefully, we can reach them, learn, learn how to reach them and put some of the vehicles in motion that we can help to educate them and get, get through to them, the importance of a clean city and why it's important to take a sense of responsibility and deal with the waste that you produce, whether it be walking home from a convenience store, how you, how you handle your trash at your house and your garbage can, how you tarp your back, your load, your truck, your trailer when you're traveling, all of this, when you're out walking and you've got to be able to walk more than 35 steps to put something in the trash can. And that's what we're hoping to get him to tell us, how to reach people in our community.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate, just to reiterate what Ms. Curtis has said, we met this week and we discussed our adoptive, adoptive bus stop program. It's a program that's gonna be coming for you in the next few weeks that is gonna be a program and initiative that citizens and community organizations can look at to adopt a bus stop in their area, actually help clean it, clean up around that stop. But also, one of the things that we do already is add trash cans at stops. So, we've spoken with Councilman Green about adding additional trash cans in his district and also throughout the city of Shreveport. So, that's gonna be our little initiative as we go forward. We're looking forward to partnering with Shreveport Green to make sure that initiative goes forward to combat litter in our city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savant.
And also, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Cox. Did he leave?
No, he's over there.
I'd like to just say thank you to Dr. Cox for all he's doing and certainly, he's been a great friend of mine and I'd just like to say, keep up the good work. And also, for those of you that need a food truck or have an activity, his sons, they have a soul food truck and they come anywhere, they cook pigtails and chitlins and hogmaws and, alright.
Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite Jessica Miller, the executive director, and her team from the Gingerbread House to make a presentation to the council. By way of introduction, for those that don't know, the Gingerbread House provides absolutely critical services to a multi-parish area in the northwest part of the state. They are partners with local law enforcement agencies and provide forensic interviews of children that have been sexually abused and physically abused in other ways. Councilman Butcher, Councilwoman Flure and I had the privilege of taking a tour of the Gingerbread House today and I will tell you from what I've seen, local law enforcement could not effectively prosecute the many heinous crimes against children that unfortunately happened in our community without the help of the Gingerbread House. So, thank you for being here, Ms. Miller.
Thank you for having me. Good afternoon, Mayor Perkins, ladies and gentlemen of the council and my fellow citizens, and thank you for this opportunity to address the council and to give you a progress report on the Gingerbread House and what we've been able to do and how we impact our community. First off, I'll start with a few figures that, that I think are very important. In the year 2018, the Gingerbread House served 940 child victims of sexual abuse and severe physical abuse in our community. Out of that number, 388, representing 41.3%, were specifically for the Shreveport Police Department. Those are our citizens, our most vulnerable citizens in our community, children as young as age two and as old as the day before they turn 17. The forensic interviews that we provide for these children are done at the Gingerbread House by trained forensic interviewers. A forensic interview is the child's testimony. It is audio and video recorded and it is later on used to prosecute in criminal court. Many of the times, once the criminal prosecution has been completed and jury members are, are spoken to, the number one item that they list as having helped them to decide the outcome of the case against these perpetrators is the forensic interview of that child victim. As you know, our judicial system is such so that there is often a delay in prosecuting cases, sometimes as much as 18 to 24 months. Having that interview taped in a, on a DVD and having that preserved is so significant for the case. If you imagine a child, let's say, age nine and then see them again at age 11 or 12, physically they're gonna look much differently as well as hoping, hopefully, some healing has taken place. This forensic interview memorializes that child's testimony and is crucial to our city's safety in prosecuting offenders. Prior to the Gingerbread House, our prosecution rate was less than 5% successful prosecution. That was back in 1998. Fast forward, we're 21 years, our prosecution rate now is over 96 to 97% successful prosecution of offenders. The number one reason for that is the multidisciplinary team model used by the Gingerbread House. We bring all the team players together, law enforcement, child protection, medical, mental health, and the district, district attorney's office. So, I'm here to ask for your continued support of the Gingerbread House and the children we serve. In all, in the 21 years that we have been here in our community, we have served 11,396 children. By a very conservative estimate by the National Children's Alliance, every single case that is handled by a children's advocacy center saves the community $1,000 during the investigation. If you do the math, we have saved the city and our community over $11.9 million. So, please, and thank you for your support. I ask you to keep the Gingerbread House in mind. Our city could really not do without the services that we provide for the most innocent that are hurt. Thank you so much.
Councilman Butcher.
Ms. Miller.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you for, for the tour and thank you for everything that you do at the Gingerbread House. I, I feel like that, you know, from everything that I've heard and of course, I've followed it since it started, but it sounds like you're an arm of the Shreveport Police Department in a lot of ways and I think that the numbers are, are telling that, that we have that many children that come through the Gingerbread House from the city of Shreveport alone. So, I think that that's incredible and then I also think that what your prosecution has gone, or what the convictions have, has gone up over a, you know, 20-year period is, is miraculous. So, keep up the good work and I appreciate everything that y'all do.
Thank you.
It's sobering to me that we live in a society that, that we have this kind of, you know, going on, we have that. You were telling us about human trafficking has become a, a huge issue and y'all are seeing people that have been trafficked that may be, you know, being used for prostitution now that may be under the age of 17, which is just, it's horrible. So, I wish that there was, I wish that y'all could go out of business and y'all weren't even needed. I think you said that today and, and I agree 100%. So, thank you for everything that you do and, and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Alright. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chair.
Councilman Green?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Mr. John Settle. I thought I saw him.
Yes.
He contributed a thousand dollars to Crime Stoppers to add to the pot to find the person that a month or so ago, the little baby that was killed, Queen, and Mrs. John Settle added a thousand dollars to the pot to now make it $3,000. And I just wanted to say publicly, thank him for, for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Settle. Any other council members? Seeing none. Mayor Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a bit under the weather today if my voice sounds a little off. First off, I wanna thank the over 900 volunteers that came out this past Saturday to show their love for Shreveport and the citywide cleanup. We collected 5.8 tons of trash this weekend. It's a lot of trash. I wanna be mindful of keeping our city not just clean on one day, but keeping our city clean at all times. So, I just wanna thank the citizens who participated in it. It was a very, very great showing for our, our city. This morning, we had several of our folks work from, I'm sorry, several of our folks from Public Works, SPD, and legal to travel over to Monroe to experience their environmental court. As you know, we've talked about, we're gonna be starting our own here, so we just went over there to look at some of the best practices that, that their city has been doing with their court. And at this time, is Mr. Terrence Green, Director Green, you wanna get up and tell us a little bit about what you learned this morning?
And property standards should've been in that list of departments.
Yeah, well, we, we had a good time in Monroe. We actually got to see the environmental court live and live in color. It's a very good platform for us to start building on, something that we can adopt and basically make it a living ordinance. It doesn't just penalize people all of the time, but it also doesn't let violators just go and pay a court cost and get off the hook. The judge there was willing to work with people. Most of the people who actually showed up and came to court did not receive a fine because they did come and try to show that they were working on their property. So, you know, it's, it's not what people think as it's like a, a ticket, but it's just, you'll have your day in court or your say as to what you're gonna do with your property. They are getting ready to start putting the information out to the public because they're gonna get ready to start making some changes as it relates to adjudicated properties. Taxpayer buyers will have to present a plan. They won't be able to just buy up the properties and rent them out, no repairs, no nothing. So, and this is all based off of the state statutes that are already in place. So, we're gonna look at a lot of the things that they're doing because it can help us here.
Did, did you get some, did you, you'll be able to get some of that information to Danielle?
I attended.
You went also?
Yes.
Oh, well, I'm done on that then. That's all I need to make sure she has it.
We had a packed house.
Okay.
We represented. Oh, and I did get a word. Let me, I can't even read them. Mayor Mayo said hello. And we, we liked your picture up in Monroe, City Hall.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay. That's good. I appreciate that. Some of those initiatives, I've really been looking forward to happening and getting ready to start here, so hopefully, we can mirror their environmental court here.
Well, there will be tweaks and whatnot, but for the most part, I didn't realize that they were that small, that much smaller than we are, but, so we'll, we'll make some changes and it's gonna grow and develop as we, as we go on.
Okay. Councilman Flure.
Mr. Green, do you recall the case, the city, Shreveport versus Fannie Mae?
Yes.
Will that court be able to address something like that?
Yes, most definitely. Okay.
That cost Councilman Bowman and I quite a bit of cash.
Well, in, in a case like that, we can, especially when we know who the owner is and where the owner is, we can address the owner directly.
Alright. Well, thank you, Mr. Green. We appreciate you.
Okay.
Can you forward me some, forward me that information too, please?
We'll scan it in and I'll send it to you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Alright. Today, we cut the ribbon at the grand opening of the Mylum Street Kitchen Incubator as well. This is a great investment in our community by HUD and helps improve the health and quality of life in our choice neighborhoods. We even had HUD representatives all, all the way from DC come down to the grand opening for that. It was a hundred, hundreds of people from the community came out to support and it was overall a great event. Also, we had Senator Cassidy, who was present for the event, who gave some words and I met with him afterwards to talk about some, some issues that we were having in the city and how our federal legislate, federal legislators can help us out with, with some other things. As you all know, the scores are in for the candidates for police chief. I met with the selection committee last week to discuss what I'm looking for and gave them a charge to begin their process and narrow the list to the top three. We are looking to have the chief named by the end of September. Also, last week, we held a community bond meeting at our recreational center in Southern Hills, where Councilman Flurry was kind enough to join us. We'll be holding several more throughout the city at, at other community centers and with local civic and business organizations. This week, we'll be at Broadmoor Presbyterian Church at 6:00 PM. Please check shreveport.gov for upcoming meetings in your area. At this time, I would like to call up representatives from Milliman to present the status of our employee pension, Mr. Chris Goodman and Mr. Jeremy White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all today. I am an actuary with the Employee Benefits Consulting Firm of Milliman in Dallas. My colleague, Jeremy White, he did most of the hard work on this presentation. I may need to call him up today. But what we wanna talk about today is the current state of the city's retirement plan. I know it's been a topic of conversation the last few months, so we wanna look at today how we got to where the plan currently sits. In particular, the funded percentage of the plan. I know you all look at this every year and you're really well-versed in the funded status and what that means, but for anybody new, the funded status of the plan is basically the ratio of plan assets to plan liabilities. So, if the funded percentage was 100%, that would mean there are currently assets sufficient to cover all current and future plan benefits. A 40% funded status would indicate there's only 40% of assets available to cover, to cover 40% of our current and future benefits. So, I think this chart does a good job of showing what's happened over the last 12 years. 2007, the plan had a funded status of 81%, which is pretty good, right? Today, 42%. So, how'd we get from here to here? First thing that happened, we'll all recall the pain of 2008 and the financial crisis where this plan had a minus 27% return on assets, which just by itself dropped the funded percentage from 81 to 52%. Huge hit. We saw that on basically all those plans we work on. So, then there was a little recovery in 2009 and 2010, getting back almost to 60%. Then another big drop to 49%. And this is probably a topic that wasn't really well-covered or announced back in 2011, but your actuary back then dropped the discount rate from eight and a half percent to seven and three quarters. I don't wanna get real deep in the actuarial weeds because that usually loses a crowd, but to understand what the discount rate is, when we do evaluation, we project the benefits that are gonna be paid from the plan from today all the way to 80 years out. Right now, there's a 20, 22-year-old in this plan that in 80 years is still gonna be getting a benefit payment, or at least there's a probability he will. Then to put that in terms of dollars today, we discount back all of those benefit payments to now using a discount rate. The higher the discount rate you use, the lower your liability will be. So, there's a real danger to use a high discount rate. You can really mask the true cost of a plan and that was kinda what was happening back in 2007. Eight and a half percent certainly isn't a realistic rate of return today. It wasn't even back in 2007. So, that, you actually realize this by, whoops, by 2011 and drop the rate down to seven and three quarters, which I would contend was still too high of a rate. So, now you're at 49, 50% moving along. And you know, you have some great people at the city who have been very diligent about this issue and know that changes had to be made. When we came in in 2014, they asked us to look at benefit changes that could possibly help the funded status. We did that work in 2014. We'll talk about that on the next page. Then a couple other items happened that took the funded status down even more. We had to drop the rate down to 7% because even seven and three quarters was still too high, which lowered your funded status another four percentage points. And then there were a couple of more down years in the market in 15 and 18. And in particular, the asset losses in 18 took the funded status from 47 to 42%. So, basically, using more realistic actuarial assumptions and three bad years in the market, took this plan from 81% to 42%. So, what's being done about that? First, in 2015, you implemented some benefit and funding changes. The benefit multiplier was dropped from 3.33%, which is a fairly rich benefit, to 2.75%. But that was only enacted for future employees. You can't mess with benefits accrued to date. Also, the vesting was changed from 10 to 15 years and the retirement eligibility was ratcheted down quite a bit. Back in the old days, a 45-year-old with just 10 years of service could retire and start receiving benefits. So, that was ramped back quite a bit. In addition, the city committed to putting in more money and asked the employees to share in that commitment and those funding contribution increases are still being phased in. By 2021, the city will be contributing 30% of payroll, whereas back in 2017, that was Here's a snapshot of the plan's participant population. In blue are employees who were in the plan prior to the benefit changes in 2015. Then in orange, we're indicating the new employees who will now be under the still very good benefit formula but ratcheted down. The more orange this bar becomes, the more it's gonna help the plan's liability situation years out, but it's gonna take years, decades perhaps, to really realize that savings. Here's where the majority of the liability for the plan is coming from. You have a lot of retirees who have some fairly decent-sized benefits. There's also a question about a study that Milliman prepared back in 2014. There's also a question about a study that Milliman prepared back in 2014, where we projected, with these benefit changes, what the status would look like five years out. Back in 2014, we projected a 52% funded status, but here we are now in 2018, and that number actually ended up being 42%. So obvious question, what happened? Why are we 10 percentage points off? First and main reason is the discount rate. Recall, back in 2014, the rate was still seven and three quarters when we came in and took over this work, and we suggested it had to be dropped down to 7%. So just that one change dropped the funded status seven percentage points. Then there were a couple of bad years in the market and other changes, which mostly involves demographic gains and losses. People not retiring or terminating when we think they will, when we project they will. But really, the big driver was the discount rate. For a little bit more information on those items, here you can see the discount rates used by the 100 largest public plans in the country. Shreveport is now using a 7% rate, which puts you in the, with 29 of the 100 plans. In other words, 71 of the biggest plans in the country are using a rate much higher than 7%. And we would probably even suggest you need to come down from 7% eventually. But it's kind of been a problem with public plans for the last few decades, using assumptions that aren't reasonable and are masking the true liabilities of these plans. Asset performance, we are projecting seven and three quarters for this five-year period, but the actual annual rate of return for that five-year period was 5%, so that hurt. Another change is the scheduled funding increases were scaled back just a little bit, which took off about one percentage points off of that ratio. So here's a look of how we went from year-end '17 to year-end '18, from 48% funded to 42% funded, from $217 million in unfunded liability to $242 million in unfunded liability. So there's liabilities and there are assets, right? Those are the two sides of the equation. If you look at the liability column, the liability went from $413 million to $416 million. So that was not the problem. It's about the increase we would've expected. Here's the problem. Assets went from $196 million to $174. The plan had $30 million in benefit payments last year. The city socked in $10.5 million. Its employees paid $6 million, so 30 million got, went out, only $16.5 million went in. Now, if we're assuming you're gonna hit 7% asset return, that's kind of simple math, 7% times $200 million in assets, we would've expected 14 million in return. Instead, the plan lost 7 million. You know, '18 was a bad year for everybody. So if that 14, if we would've had a 14 million gain rather than 7 million loss, total contributions and investment returns would've been right at the benefit payments. So you would've been at the same place you were the year before, but it's still an issue. It's a very mature plan, a lot of retirees, so you're paying out a lot in benefit payments. Even if you're hitting your 7% mark, the money from the city, the employees and investment returns are just right at covering and maybe not quite covering what's going out of the So, and that's shown on this chart. The blue lines are projected assets over the next 25 years, and for a while, we think they're going to go down as the plan continues to pay out a lot in benefit payments to retirees, and it's not being quite covered by contributions coming in and investment returns. But by 2035, if all our assumptions are met, that starts to turn around as some of the retirees under the richer benefit scheme drop out of the plan, and now you have a population that's under the lower benefit scheme but are still paying the same amount of contributions. So, and this assumes 7% returns on average, and that the city and employees will continue to contribute at the levels we showed on the previous slides. Few other variables that can impact the plan, gonna go over these quickly, but obviously negative cash flows. If you're paying out more than is coming in, that's gonna compound over time and be an issue. Again, this is a very mature plan. You have a lot of retirees getting payments every month. Demographic variable, if people outlive their life expectancy, that's also gonna increase the liability of this plan. And recent studies are showing that people are outliving what we previously assumed they would live to, and we're gonna talk about that on the next slide. Investment returns, that's an obvious one. If you're not hitting that 7%, that's gonna be a problem. You know, there's three sources of income to this plan: investment returns, employer contributions, and employee contributions. If one of those isn't doing its job, the other two gotta make it up. So it's very important to hit that 7%, and maybe we drop that down as we continue to study what we think the long-term expected return is on this plan. Interest rate, if we do have to drop that rate, just a 1% drop, or like from 7% to 6%, would increase the liability of the plan by 10%. So right now, it's $413 million. If we drop the rate from 7% to 6%, it goes up to $453 million. Covered employment, very important that, well, I mean, you need to collect the contributions from your employees, so if your employment level drops, you're not gonna be getting as much from employees. So our projections are assuming, you know, your employee, employee base is staying fairly Quick, quick comment on public pension plan. We now have governmental-specific mortality tables. We've only had corporate tables before, but now the Society of Actuaries has published one specific to governmental agencies. They have a table for teachers, one for public safety, and one for general. We think you, the Shreveport plan would fall into the general category. For the most part, the tables show that people are living longer than we previously thought they were. The longer they live, the longer they collect benefit payments, the higher your liability is. And we're studying which of these tables we'll implement, but just keep in mind, there's two assumptions that could further increase the cost of the plan: the discount rate and the mortality. So, that's where the plan is as of today. Any questions?
Councilman Butcher?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the presentation. We've been hearing a lot about the unfunded retirement and pension plan. I, I wanna kind of lay out a scenario and you tell me if I'm right or wrong on this. So basically, let's say that we, we get our, you know, Shreveport had a declining population. Hopefully, this, this council and this mayor can stop the declining population. But let's say, worst-case scenario, we're not. 2020 census comes in, we've lost, we're down to 170,000 people, worst-case scenario. We don't need quite as many employees as we had prior to. It's just an effect of a lower population. So you're telling me that this, this could really even be more critical if we don't have those employees paying in? So let's say somebody that came to work for the city today, 10 years from now, our population has continued, continued to dwindle. There is, there is a great possibility that people that have been working here for 10 years to 20 years may not have their retirement. That's, that's the nuts and bolts of this whole presentation, right?
I mean, I guess it's possible. Again, between investment returns, city contributions, employee contributions, somebody's gotta make up that difference. If you're telling me that employee contributions are gonna decrease, it's gotta come from one of the other two.
Well, and I think that's, that's the other aspect. You know, we can't control what the economy does to the market. We can't control a lot, a lot of this, but I, you know, I mean, is there a fix to this? Is there something that we can do as a city to, to maybe shore this up, to make sure that our employees are protected? And that the city also is protected, because, you know, I was talking to somebody the other day, and they're like, well, we don't pay into the, it was a city employee, we don't pay into the retirement system. And I'm like, well, but if we have a, if we have a retirement system that is bankrupt, we're not gonna be able to pay you because we have that liability that we have to pay our employees. So it all, it's all together. So I mean, is there anything we can do as a city now to take proactive measures?
The main thing to do is, when possible, put in more money now. Next thing is, we're looking at other options as far as on the benefit side. The city's asked us to explore if there's anything else we can do on that side of the equation to bump up this funded status, and we're still looking at that.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Nicholson?
Sir, thank you for your presentation. This is an issue, I think, that all members of the council are very concerned about, and I want to focus my questions on several points that you made. The first concerns are discount rate. The five-year average return, I understood from your presentation, was just south of 5%. But we're assuming with our discount rate of 7%, a far higher rate of return than we've been historically getting, right?
Right. Well, at least for that five-year period.
Well, that's right.
And when we look at a rate of return, we're looking at a 20, 30, 40-year period.
Do you have a sense, at this point, that we may need to further reduce our discount rate from 7% to be making responsible projections about the future value of the pension system?
I do.
And where do you think we should consider? What is the range that, that we're looking at?
I think the range would be around 5.5% to 7.25%. So 7% is still in the range of reasonableness, but probably the, the right number, I think, could be 6.5%.
And, and that would, if, if you adjust the discount rate, then you've gotta put more money in, or you've gotta reduce benefits, right?
Correct.
To maintain the plan's solvency. The multiplier for employees who start today is 2.75%. And for those that are listening and may not know, the multiplier is part of the equation that we use along with years of service and some other factors to determine what a person's benefit is going to be. How does 2.75% compare to other municipalities and government entities around the country?
I think it compares pretty well. I'm thinking of just the plans I work on. It's the highest percentage of any plan I work on.
It's the highest percentage of any plan you work on?
Right. Now, that's, you know, it's four or five public plans. And that, we can get that data, actually. We can do a comparison to both local, statewide benefit formulas, and even, you know, go countrywide if you'd like to see that.
Well, if, if our multiplier is the highest, what is a more typical multiplier for the plans that you work on at Milliman?
Well, probably about 2.5%. It's not a whole lot higher.
Your presentation noted that last year, we paid expenses of $1,005,000. That seems high to me. Do you have any idea what's behind that number, or is that beyond the scope of your responsibilities in actuary?
I don't know, but I probably could do a little research into that.
Does that seem high to you? Is that a high expense number for?
Well, I mean, I think about a million of it may have been investment management for a portfolio of $400 million. I don't know if that's really that out of line. Where the rest of it came from, I'm not sure, to be honest.
And you put up a spreadsheet or a graph of projected assets. Talk to me about that number in terms of the funding ratio. Right now, it's 42% funded, or as of 12/31/18. If we don't do anything, what does our funding ratio look like as we project out into the future?
It's just gonna slowly increase, very slowly, though, because just due to the nature of the maturity of the plan, we are paying out so much in payments, and what's coming in is barely covering the payments, maybe a little bit lower. So it's not gonna drop, but it's just gonna slowly increase.
But if, if we were to have a return on our investment assets for the plan, say, 5.5% rather than 7%, those numbers would be worse, wouldn't they?
They would be worse, yes.
And, and in fact, the value of the plan might decline if we dropped our return into that level.
That's possible.
Well, look, again, I appreciate you being here. This is something that, this is really about planning for the future and doing the right thing for, you know, children and grandchildren, and not necessarily the people sitting here in the room today. If we don't make responsible decisions about, about funding this plan and about what retirement benefits we are promising our workers, to whom we owe a great debt, our successors may wake up one day and not be able to keep those promises. And that is why I think it's very important that we make whatever changes need to be made now, so that, so that promises aren't broken later. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like the previous councilman was articulating, it appeared that the weaknesses of the plan outweighed the strengths of it. And when I hear these type of reports, I always try to categorize them through a SWOT analysis. So if the trend continues the way it's going, what do you see as a threat for this city?
See as the, excuse me?
As a threat.
As a threat?
Yes.
Yeah, not hitting the 7% or if we drop it to 6.5%, not hitting the asset return level. If the city were to try to scale back the contributions that is committed to, if the employee base drops too much, some employees aren't contributing enough, yeah, just really the threat is one of the three sources of income not pulling its weight.
Do you see a, do you see a strength in the report that you just gave us?
Well, I think the strength is that you have good people here at the city that are looking at this and studying every measure they can to improve the situation. The other strength, I would say, is nobody is in imminent danger of not getting their retirement. You know, that one graph shows it eventually goes back up, so you're not gonna hit a depletion point where the money isn't there for retirees.
I mean, and you're gonna be here to sort of assist and direct us in some, some of these areas?
Yes.
So, Councilman Butcher made, made a very compelling statement in, in saying that if the population continues to go on a downward trend, there's gonna have to be some real, real tight decision-making regarding how we're gonna manage that. So, would you suggest that there are some opportunities that we can start to focus on that will help us either, in any, in any condition that, that we may start focusing on, that will, that we can start thinking about or focusing on, that will, would help us not get into that lower tier of, of possible benefits for our people?
Yeah, I think you gotta look at the benefit side and the asset side. So the benefit side is something we're gonna study, see if there's anything else to be done there. And on the asset side, anytime there's extra money, I know money's tight everywhere, right? If there's any extra money, should probably go into the pension fund.
Well, I also thank you for coming, and we've been anticipating this, this presentation, but it doesn't stop here. We're gonna have to really focus on this.
Yeah, this is a issue that will continue for some time, obviously.
So, there's, there's various committees that we also have made up, and we may ask you to come back and we can do a little bit more detailed discussions on this.
Yeah, I'm available anytime.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. CIO Jones?
I want to mention that all of these variables, and, and, you know, Chris has mentioned, you know, kind of the balance that they have to, you know, make to kind of find that sweet spot, but the, the ERS Board is looking at this right now. Councilman Nicholson, you know, as a member, we've been having these discussions with the Board, and the city has not been blind to this. Have you seen, you know, over time, we've been making some tweaks to be able to try to improve the funding ratio, and of course, none of those things will make a drastic change. It's, it's more of an effect that happens over time, over the long run. So we are looking at that, but I do want to make sure that we mention, especially for the retirees and employees, is that the city has sufficient assets to be able to cover our current retirees' payments and future retirees, and Chris can, you know, provide some detail, you know, to clarify that, just so that current retirees, you know, future retirees understand that there are assets to make those payments, that we are looking into the future just to make sure, you know, in those out years, that we continue to make, be proactive, to make sure that that continues strong.
Right, that's absolutely a great point. We're, we do not project any point in the future where retirees are not able to be paid the retirement benefits.
Okay. Councilman Nicholson?
Mr. Chairman, as Ms. Jones mentioned, I am the council's representative on the retirement board by your appointment. She and I have been discussing this issue for a number of months, so I appreciate the attention that she and Mayor Perkins have paid to it, and I'm confident that the administration is committed to making the changes necessary to ensure that we can keep the promises we've made to our city employees. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Nicholson.
One last thing. We were talking about doing some comparisons. Is there any way we could do comparisons of similar-sized cities?
Absolutely, sure. Just tell me which ones.
Just, I'll let Councilman Nicholson handle that since he's on that board, but...
Thank you, Councilman.
Just, just kind of give us a comparison as far as where they are with their unfunded portion and where we are, to kind of give us an idea. I mean, the other part is, is there any way that the city could post this report on the webpage where we can, where the citizens and... webpage where we can, where the citizens and employees can have access to it?
Yeah, we can check. I'm sure we can get it posted.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Chair, the last point I want to make, we are going to pull Resolution 111 concerning ratifying the $452,322 expenditure of water and sewer revenue bonds. There's been some concerns that have come to our attention that we need to, to look a little deeper into. So we'll pull that and bring it back to council once we iron that out. Thank you. That's all my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Brapp.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm in order, I'd like to suspend the rules and hear the clerk's And anyone that's here that is applicable to the clerk's report, we would hear them. And we had said on yesterday that we would go ahead and confirm at least one of the nominees that was presented to us. So I so move.
Set. Been moved by Councilman Brapp and then second by Councilman Green to suspend the rules on confirming, I think it was.
Well, we'll get to that one. I want to hear your voice, Ray.
This is to suspend the rules on the clerk's report.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
You ready, Mr.?
Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
The following confirmation and appointment letters were, were received from the mayor on August 21st. He appointed to the Shreveport Sports, Boja Sports Commission Billy Montgomery, to the Zoning Board of Appeals Brittany Dunn, to the Civil Service Board Brian Hollins, Assam Jones, Henry Walker, Jonathan Scroggins, and Ebony Norris.
Any other persons present, Mr. Chairman?
I do not believe so. We just asked for about Mr. Montgomery yesterday. I think the other ones were anticipating on coming to the next.
So, Mr. Chairman, I've moved that this council will.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I anticipate that you're going to move that we would have confirmed the appointment of Billy Montgomery?
Yes.
First, I think you need to amend, make a motion to amend the agenda to add Billy Montgomery to the agenda, and then to, we need a motion to suspend the rules because the rules say that you will, you will not make the appointment for two weeks, so you would suspend that rule. So there, there are a series of motions that need to be. The first is to add it to the agenda, which requires a unanimous vote.
Councilman Fleury, you suggested on yesterday. Is that still your desire?
Yes.
Okay. So I so move, Mr. Chairman, that we would suspend the rules to add Mr. Montgomery's confirmation to the agenda.
Right. Been moved by Councilman Brapp and then second by Councilman Fleury.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You also need to find out whether or not anybody wants to speak for or against adding it to the agenda.
Adding it to the agenda? I don't think so. Is there anyone present that wants to speak for or against adding this to the agenda? Seeing none. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries with seven.
A motion to suspend the rules to take up the appointment at this point on the agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's moved by the chair, second by Councilman Butcher. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
A motion to confirm the.
So move.
Second.
It's moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher. Please vote, please. And that motion carries with seven. Thank you.
So the appointment of Billy Montgomery has been confirmed.
For Billy Montgomery. Congratulations to Mr. Montgomery. Okay. Do we have a, is that public hearing today?
Yes. We have four.
All right.
On the annexation ordinances.
Okay. The public hearing is now being called to order. Does the administration have a presentation?
Is that on ordinance 101?
101 of 2019.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'm Malcolm Statlander with the City Engineers Office. Here to discuss tag number 1901, which concerns 63.208 acres of land in Section 3, Township 18 North, Range 14 West, and Section 34, Township 19, Range 14 West, in Caddo Parish, Louisiana. The Alta and John Frank's Foundation owns 58.7 of these acres, and Trinity Heights Baptist Church owns the remaining 4.5 acres. The 58.7 acres will be developed into the Trinity Heights subdivision. The area is contiguous to the city limits of Shreveport and lies between Old Mooring Sport Road and 12 Mile Bayou. The developer plans to subdivide this area into 82 residential lots with approximately 3,226 linear feet of public streets. The estimated value of the residential properties will be $225,000 per unit. Installation of all water lines, sewer lines, storm drains, and public streets will be the responsibility of the developer. The Metropolitan Planning Commission approved this annexation on July 10th, 2019. The southern portion of the proposed annexation is contiguous to the existing city limits. The city of Shreveport received a petition from the property owners, which was the Alta and John Frank's Foundation and Trinity Heights Baptist Church representing this annexation. I'm sorry, I failed to put the plat up here, and I'll do that now. This shows the area that's proposed to be annexed.
Where's the church, Mr. Statlander? Is that the one that says "in" right there, right?
No, sir. "In" is the existing city limits.
Where the church, where's Trinity? In reference to this, where's Trinity Heights Baptist Church at?
Um.
Probably right there where Pine Hill Road comes in, isn't it?
Let me look at my map.
Yeah, it's down, it's down from that.
Yes, where Pine Hill Road comes in, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I'll wait to speak on it when it comes up, but I think there's some people here who want to speak on it, Mr. Chairman. Give them that opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to take each one up separately?
Yeah.
At the pleasure, I'm at the pleasure of the council. So if one of you want to do it.
This is easier. You want to go ahead?
Sure, I'll be happy to go through all, all four of them if you want me to. Okay? All right. I'll put the plat up on, on the map on this one so you can see it from the beginning. This annexation is tag number 1902 and concerns 30.8 acres of land in Section 33, Township 17 North, Range 14 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. The city of Shreveport purchased the nine lots, which are hashed, as part of the noise abatement program for the Shreveport Airport Authority. The nine properties are contiguous to the existing city limits, and they represent holes that are inside the city limits now. The Metropolitan Planning Commission approved this annexation on July 10th, 2019, and Mayor Adrian Perkins signed the petition requesting this annexation. Tag number 1903 concerns the annexation of a portion of the Southern Loop roadway in Sections 19, 20, 29, and 30, Township 16 North, Range 13 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. The city of Shreveport owns this right-of-way and requests the annexation of that portion extending west from the existing city limits. Right here. To the westerly right-of-way line of Wallace, of the Wallace Lake Road intersection. That would be here. The Metropolitan Planning Commission approved this annexation on July 10th, 2019. Almost all of the north side of the roadway is contiguous to the existing city limits, and Mayor Adrian Perkins signed a petition requesting this annexation. Our final proposed annexation for today is that of a 5.47 acre tract of land in Section 8, Township 16 North, Range 13 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, and it's known as the Novay Care subdivision. It's contiguous to the city limits of Shreveport and lies adjacent to Florida Lucas Road northeast of the LRB Road intersection. The owner plans to develop this area into small commercial businesses. Installation of all water lines, sewer lines, storm drains, and private streets will be the responsibility of the developer. The Metropolitan Planning Commission also approved this annexation on July 10th, 2019. The northwest portion of the proposed annexation is contiguous to the city limits of Shreveport, and the city received the petition from the property owner, Montrose Investments, LLC, requesting this annexation. That's all I have.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak for or against these annexations?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Council. I'm Andy Craig with Moore &amp; Associates. We're the engineer for the Trinity Bluff subdivision that was the first case that Mr. Statlander, uh, first annexation case Mr. Statlander described. I just want to encourage your support for this subdivision. As he said, there's 82 lots proposed in this subdivision. 36 will be in Unit Number One, which we hope will be breaking ground within a few weeks. I've been doing this for about 40 years. Most of the residential subdivision, a lot of commercial work, but in my recollection, this is the first major subdivision of this type in Council District A. So we think it's, you know, we're proud to be doing this, and look forward to it, and would like your support. I'd be glad to answer any question on the subdivision if anyone has it.
Have Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy, it's good to see you, and I'm just glad that y'all decided to move at your new location so that we could have the rent, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Brapp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be remiss if I did not express my appreciation to Mr. Craig and his partners. It was over six months ago that they approached me about this development. I immediately got excited because he just mentioned, and it's true, that a development like this has not happened in District A in more than, you know, 20 years. I see it as a, an initiator of other great things that could happen in North Shreveport. I, I mentioned to you several weeks ago that out of all the annexations, and I'm not a big proponent of annexations, especially when it's, when they're so far outside of the city limits, but this one is an ideal annexation because on the, both the north and the south side of this proposed development, it's very contiguous to the city already. On the south side, you have North Highlands. And if you go, go up Mooring Sport Road and cross Highway 71, you have North Lakewood. So it's easy, an easy fix for the city as it relates to infrastructure, although they're going to do initial infrastructure, but it, it's not at all a complicated annexation, so. But I see it as a real shot in the arm for, for North Shreveport and District A. So again, I'll speak on it a little further, but I appreciate it, and I appreciate your support of this project. Thank you, Mr. Craig, for coming down.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak for or against any of the annexations? Mr. Weiner?
I live at number two Lonely Flame, 71106. I'm here to say no annexation. Let me spell that for you. It's not NO, it's KNO. You've got to know what you're doing. I couldn't have had a better introduction than the man who spoke about the retirement. He, he mentioned the problem, that people are leaving Shreveport, and as our employments drop, we're going to have problems. I predict, and I've been trained in planning, that in four generations, Shreveport will not exist because it will be bankrupt. Because, just look at our sewer situation. 30 years ago, 25, 30 years ago, there was a group of us here trying to get the city to fix the sewer situation. We told them what was going to happen. Nobody would listen. It happened. It's about to really hurt us financially. And, and I'm trying to tell you about this. With people leaving, and there's this mentality that bigger is better. That's not true. Quality of life is better. We have the Chamber of Commerce, a committee of 100, and City Hall, there's growth, growth, growth. But what nobody talks about is when you annex, you're taking on maintenance forever. It's a losing proposition. It's known all over the country that annexation is a loss economically and could put the city out of business. We have great schools, our magnet schools. Those kids go to colleges. They see other cities. They don't want to come back here. And we have parents who are telling their kids, you know, "Go live somewhere else." It's because we're not addressing the problems, and one of them is annexation. There's some others that are being done all over the world, but there's nobody to talk to, to sit down and, and have a citizens' meeting. We don't have a vision statement. How can we solve our problems if we don't know what we want to do? It needs to be citizen-driven to figure out where we want the city. Do we want it to be like Dallas with traffic everywhere, or do we want to keep it a 20-minute city? And, but this annexation is one of the, the problems. And I want to ask you for the action of just to postpone this and do a real study on the economic effects of annexation. These ones that are subdivisions, they can exist outside the city, you know? So I'm, I'm not, I mean, I could talk for two hours on all these problems, but I'm not going to. But we have assets in this city that make us. But we have assets in this city that make us unique, and we're not even looking at them. I doubt if any of you are aware of some of the great assets we have and some of the problems that can be easily fixed, like adjudicated properties. We shouldn't be selling them. We should develop a program for urban homesteading where you can take a piece of property and have a procedure where a person can come in and here's a list of things you have to do to fix it up. If they can do it within two years, give them the property. It makes the whole neighborhood better. And there are just so many things like that. Our billboards, I don't know of another city that has as many billboards. There are ways to reduce them without hurting anybody. Look at the New York taxis. They have a set number of taxis. You bid, pay to get a taxi permit. You can do the same thing with assigned permits, have a fixed number. You bid to get the permits, and you reduce it a little bit each year, and everybody wins. And there's other things like this, and you want me to quit?
I just want you to stay on annexation. That was it. No, no, I just want you to stay on annexation. That's fine. I ain't going to cut you off. Councilwoman Fuller?
I'm good.
Okay. You know, I'm really up here to try to start a discussion, and we need to start addressing these things to make Shreveport better, not bigger. And we're seeing the economic effects. We just heard about that, and there are other things that are going to happen. So please try to set up a special meeting on a different day to discuss these items. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bradford?
I would rather.
If there's not anyone else to speak on for or against these being added, then this public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson on the legislation to be added?
No, sir.
That's it? Okay. We have a final request to speak.
Good evening. How's everybody? Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, City Councilmen, public employees, ladies and gentlemen of the city of Shreveport, I am Albert Brown, 439 East 81st Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I represent the BIC because I care ministry. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and City Councilmen, for what you have done and answered my calling to fix that street, and I know still some more things to be done. I want to thank you all, and my prayers are with you all. I know it's going to take time to do a lot of things because I pray for this city every day. I walk the streets. I see the world. I live in City Grove. I love my city, and like I tell people all the time, I ain't going no place. My children tried to get me to come to West Palm Beach, father. I've been there, I don't want to go there, it's too big. I like Shreveport, and I'm praying for Shreveport, and I'm not negative toward Shreveport. I'm positive. We can change this thing around. Let me go, you know it. We're preachers. We can change this thing if we pray and start looking at it on a positive level, instead of everybody talking negative. Everybody talks negative. But I tell people in a minute, I'll speak positive for my mayor and my city councilman and my city. Because why? Because if anybody go out and complaining, you ain't going to never get nothing done. But if we start looking and working together and looking toward the positive part of City of Shreveport, because they got problems everywhere, just not in Shreveport, everywhere. People are people no matter where you go. So we can quit lying, talking about City of Shreveport is bad. We got problems, and I travel, and I go places, and I see my chairman, chairman, say, "Dad, it's bad in Florida." But see, nobody wants to see, everybody wants to see the bad part of City of Shreveport. Look at the good part of Shreveport. Look at the good part, and let's work together. My faith, my prayer, every day. Now, I do ask you all that we can start working toward getting this grass blown, they can, you know, me and Mr. Green, we're going to go, we're going to travel tomorrow and go and see how we can work on getting this, these lawn people, they blow that grass and they don't pick it up. And I seen that we got an audience, we got to start addressing that thing hard. And I thank God, y'all, y'all had police coming through the City of Shreveport the other day, they were running, taking living right. And I thank God for that. I thank God for that. Just give me a few more minutes, y'all.
Is that Mr. Jane Green?
Yeah, I'm talking about the green there. Just give me a few more minutes. Like I said, I'm going to talk positive for Shreveport. I'm not going to put Shreveport down. I'm not going to put you down, brother. I'm not going to put y'all down because we got to work together. We got to work together, and I thank God for you all because y'all have done a great job.
I very much appreciate you.
If I got to clap my hands on my shit, I'm going to do it for y'all. So y'all keep going forward. God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, before you leave, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your remarks wholeheartedly. We was talking about that today, how it just appeared that there's a, some type of power force have come over this city that everybody's just looking at it in a negative way when it's not that way, you know? I say often that we don't see things as they are, we see things as we are, and people feel like, you know, the city is the way they are.
Yeah.
And I keep saying, and this councilman, I've been here four and a half years, but this mayor and this council, four members of it, has only been here seven months.
Mm-hmm, and it just got started.
And oftentimes, what we hear is holding them responsible, holding this body responsible for what happened years ago, even the gentleman who spoke earlier. Say that he told somebody something 30 years ago, and it didn't happen, but yet it's this, it's this body's fault.
Yeah.
And that's not, that's not fair. But your comments there was well-received and well-articulated, and I thank you for coming and saying those things.
Yeah, y'all just get started. Give your time. Be patient.
This city is going to be a great city.
Be patient. Be, be, be patient.
Thank you, sir.
Give your time. Give your time. I ain't sitting down because I'm talking positive. I'm talking positive for this city.
Mr. Brown, I got one, I got a comment as well. Just, I want to echo what Councilman Bradford said. I greatly, greatly appreciate your positive attitude, and I was going to say, you should come around with me when I do these town halls so you can, so this can be contagious. You've got to put it out, put it out into our community, but, you know, honesty though, I tell people, it was my last closing remarks when I was in the Southern Hills, and I tell people, you know, we have some negative people in our community, but who do we want to determine the future of our community? You want the negative people that don't have a plan and want to complain? You know, you want to go in a direction with them and just sit down, or you want to go in a direction of the people that are positive and patient with ourselves, and they actually have a vision, and they are solution-oriented? I choose the latter, so I appreciate you for your comments.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm praying for you, Doc.
Thanks, sir.
I'm praying for y'all because I can sit on my front porch and walk down the street. You know, like I said, I know we have problems in Shreveport, but hey, everybody got problems everywhere. God bless y'all.
Thank you.
And if I don't mind, go be. I don't chew my carrots twice.
Hi, Lauren Anderson, 247 East Lister, 71101. I just had an idea for the Fairgrounds field, if it hasn't been proposed already. I thought it might be a good idea to turn it into a bat sanctuary, and I'm not joking. In a lot of other cities, you have urban inner-city areas where bats do gather, and it's actually a tourist attraction in many places. People come to learn about the bats, watch them. They play an important part in our ecosystem. They are, they eat a lot of mosquitoes, and the enemy of my enemy is my friend. So I like bats because they eat mosquitoes. The building's structurally sound, the bats are already there. I don't see why it would be much of a problem. It seems like the money could be spent elsewhere instead of raising a structurally sound building or renovating a building like that that already has basically a natural resource in it. And I do agree, it is an eyesore on the side of I-20. Nobody wants to see that whenever they drive into town. A lot of people who come from Texas, that's one of the first things that they see, and I hear all about it, about how bad Shreveport looks, and it would be nice to clean up that area. That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. City Councilwoman Lillian Edwards, I live at 3911 Sandra Street, Shreveport, 71109. Mayor and Councilman, I was here a couple of weeks ago because of the overpayment of my water bill, and you had me to talk to Ms. Belliston about my bill, and I brought them with me. She refunded my money, but she kept $65.43 of it, and I've been talking to her and Crystal about trying to get it back, and she refusing to give me my money. So I came here today and I bought my bills to see if I can get my $65.43.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
We have Mr. Anderson in the back. If he wanted to speak with her, gentleman stand up in the back. You can go and talk to him.
Okay. Is that going, he going to give me my money? Huh?
I can't answer what he's going to do with that, so you should speak to right now.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Just get with Mr. Anderson. Thank you.
Why she's coming, Mr. Florida, you say you and Mr. Bowman was out a lot of money with Fannie Mae? Y'all want to contribute to this cause?
Ten dollars feet.
Good evening, Mayor Perkins, councilmember. My name is, my name is Doris Stevens. I live at 2314 Darian Street. I've been there 53 years. I used to be a power player in the city, putting people in office, and when they get there, that was the biggest mistake me and my crew could make. I'm here to address an issue that happened, incident that happened on the 25th of July, and the 25th of August. Prior to the 25th of July, the water and sewer people for seven months been across the street, digging up, putting down, covering up plant grass, really doing nothing. And so finally, now this prior to July 25th, seven months they've been over there across the street. The 25th of July, they was over there, and I, you know, I heard noise, I just went outside, and they're center point out there, and I'm saying, "What is center point doing out there?" You know? So the guy came and he said, "We thought you wasn't home. We knocked on your door, and your gas is off," and I'm thinking, "Is I going to pay the bill or what? What is doing off?" But it'll be back on in about an hour. So he, I left my window open, and he did come back in an hour, told me that the gas was, the gas line was fixed. What did I need? Lit in the house. I set my stove, my hot water heater on the back porch. So he did, but as he was finishing and coming, walking through my house back to the front, he kept saying, "Ms. Stevens, if you smell gas, get out the house and call this number." So he said it so many times, I'm saying, "Why does he keep mentioning this like that?" So as he got to the front, and I'm letting him out my home, so I'm saying, "Question this man about something." So I said, "Is all the other neighbor gases on?" He said, "No, it was just your line that city busted." "Just my gas line?" "Yes, the water and sewer people busted my gas line. They come, they go from across the street, under the street, about 1,000 feet from my house." So I'm upset now because it ain't water line or sewer line you done busted. You done busted my gas line and just come to my house. Not the, I don't wish this on nobody, not the other neighbor, mine's. So I called them all in my yard, "Get your supervisor, y'all come here, city workers too." And so I just had a little meeting. What am I supposed to do now? What if this line just didn't bust but then crack? You know? I'm really scared. My home and my sanctuary, when I'm inside 2314, what's outside that door, it doesn't matter anymore. I'm inside, it was peace, quiet. Sure, a bully can come through there and kick me in the butt, but I don't have that on my mind.
Ms. Stevens, thank you for being here today.
No, I'm not finished. Just let you let that man talk.
Chairman, your time has expired.
And on the 25th of, and on the 25th, I'm not safe in my home, I've been staying everywhere.
Ms. Stevens.
Ms. Doris, we can either try to vote, so you have more time, or I can ask you some questions to give you more time.
We've been complaining about the high-speed chase in our neighborhoods. Here a high-speed chase went on in the hood, and they come and knock my car, clean out my driveway, straddle my yard, and it's there now.
Ms. Stevens. Ms. Stevens came down yesterday to see, to see me before the council meeting started. As you recall, I was preoccupied and was late getting here, and I told her I was going to call you, but I'm telling you now that I would visit you in the morning, and we would review all your complaints, all the issues, and we, and I will work with the administration, with the council, and will refer all the issues that you are mentioning to the appropriate department to get right. I want to, I want to resolve your issues. We can't do it here today, but let me visit you in the morning, and let's, and let's work on getting that resolved, okay?
Could I address, could I address Mayor Perkins with a statement? Why are you doing this to me? I'm a citizen in the-
I'm actually trying to give you more time because your time expired by asking you questions and gives you, gives you more time.
Ms. Levitt, you're my councilwoman, and you does nothing, so I know, I just wanted to say, can I say something to Mayor Perkins?
Actually, you talked to Drayton Dunn several times about this.
He said I can speak to him, he the mayor.
But this is the council meeting.
This is the council meeting, it's not the mayor's meeting.
Council meeting. Yes, ma'am. Idiots here.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. A lady shakes a bottle of ketchup on a burger and fries and tries to get it out, but it comes out really slow, and it really annoys her, so she hits the ketchup bottle from behind as hard as she can. And then the phone rings. A child answers the phone and says, "Hello, mama can't come to the phone right now, she's beating the bottle, but she'll still catch up." It's a joke.
Yeah.
I heard it from a spin gully. Yesterday, I gave $105 to MDA, and I will try to continue as long as I possibly can because I know this is something I've been doing now, which will be for 31 years, and it means a whole lot to me. And while I'm up here, I've got to show the canteen that they gave me and the cap that they gave me. I want everyone to see this, that, for those who did see it, and John, John, I want you to see this.
I was making a note of it.
Oh, you're making a note of it? Okay. I want everyone to see that it was given to me. Those were given to me, and they meant a lot to me. I'll continue helping MDA. They got $105. Now, from the unbelievable to the ridiculous, we all get robo-calls that are so annoying and so stupid and so ridiculous. Just recently, on August 19th, I turned over 14 calls to law enforcement and thought that my situation was over with that. Oh, no, not according to the next four that called. However, they got exactly what they deserved. So they said who they were and why they called, then they said, "Please press 1," and I said, "Press this." Click, I hung up on them. I traced the calls, wrote the calls down, and blocked the calls. They picked a bad apple to bother. Shame on them, pity. But the fact of the matter is, I'm not gonna put up with it. Now Courtney Chandler said that these are scams and I can't stand lying scammers or scamming liars. I'm advising everyone right now who's watching by television, don't fall for these scamming liars or lying scammers. They will try to rip you off. So anyone out there, do not fall for them, 'cause I'm sure not going to. And if one even says like, can you hear me okay? I'll just say, I'm not going to the prom with you. Thank you.
Sammy, thank you for your service to MDA.
You got it.
Danny Martin.
Danny Martin, Shreveport, Louisiana. January twenty-fourth, nineteen fifty-seven, a legend in the city of Shreveport was born. Nineteen seventy-five, he graduated from BTW. He's alumni of BTW. The man I was speaking on about is none other than the man I call my friend, my brother, who I talk to every night. He call me every night after the news, ten fifteen P.M. The man I'm speaking about is Cedric Murphy. As you can see, he's not in here today because of a tragic incident that happened a couple of weeks ago. He was a friend of ours. He did a lot of work with the people with disabilities. He was a colleague of mine. We worked very closely together. And I just wanted to come up here and give him some honor, some respect. Once we get in contact, we're back in contact with his sister. She's gonna be in town in a couple of weeks. We're gonna do a service for him because he was cremated. And that's it, thank you.
Danny, can you be sure to give us that information when you get it? Thank you.
Donald Gault.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman and City Councilmembers. My name is Donald Gault and I reside at 3412 Judy Lane. And like you all, I too, a public servant, I joined the police department in nineteen eighty-one and I retired in two thousand and five. So I thank you all for the work that you do. Today, I would like to present a proposal, one that some of you may have some knowledge. This proposal is made on behalf of, to honor my son, Robert Gault, who was murdered here in the city on, about July the twentieth, twenty nineteen. A resident who resides at 6312 North Inwood Road, her name is Kena Harris. She proposes, she states that this proposal is submitted for your consideration, Mr. Mayor, City Council, to have a field at Bill Cockrell Park dedicated to the youth sports coach, Robert Jerome Gault. Coach Gault was a lifelong resident and respected member of the Shreve, uh, Shreveport community. As coach, um, Gault transitioned to adulthood, he began to fully realize his life's passion working with youth and sports. He demonstrated a high dexterity for athletics, which included softball, football, basketball, and eventually martial arts. His commission and passion led him to routinely initiate fundraisers to ensure each child was able to participate in local, regional tournaments and group excursions. My son's mission was simply to leave no child behind. Over a ten-year span, my son coached many basketball, football, and various other groups, boys and girls. The teams he coached included the Shreveport Spartans, the Shreveport Hurricanes, Shreveport Panthers, Shreveport, the, um, Robert Rams, including coaching at elementary, Riverside Elementary and Turner Elementary School. Of his many achievements, the two most notable were starting his own team. In April two thousand and seven, my son started the Three Eighteen Outlaws Youth Organization. In that same year, my son, he created a nonprofit organization, the acronym of PLACE, Positive Lessons All Children Embraced. He did this to cover their expenses of underprivileged children who could not afford the fees associated Robert died on, he was murdered on Ju-, July the twentieth, twenty, twenty nineteen. So the proposal asks that Bill Cockrell be the location, since it was the location for several team prac-, uh, practices, games, community events, and banquets. Ms. Kena Harris states that accordingly, there is no better way to honor his legacy than by dedicating a field at Bill Cock, Cockrell in honor of Robert Jerome Gault.
Mr. Gault, we have been in, uh, conversations about the best way to go about, uh, honoring that wish. So I'm, uh, in a conversation with, uh, Ms. Ragel at this particular time, uh, from Spar. And as soon as we get, I got your information, so as soon as we get, uh, closer to that point of what we're gonna do, which I'm sure it'll, it'll fall in that favor, uh, I'll give you a call and, and we can go from there if that's, um, that's appropriate.
Thank you, I'll conclude. Mr. Bradford, thank you for the personal way that you reached out to my family line during what continues to be a very difficult time for us. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to encourage you, sir, to continue with your monthly call up to clean up Shreveport. It might give us, who are out of town like I was, an opportunity to show up and participate. And I'd like to add that you might wanna ask the local TV news, uh, personalities and radio stations to offer some free airtime to ask the people, let's say four years, over a year, over their airtime, to not throw the trash out onto the streets.
Councilman Bradford.
Yeah, Mr. Gault, listen, uh, you, you, you're a great father, uh, great role model to your family. And, uh, I just wanted to say that, I don't know the criteria for your request, but I agree with the chairman in that we would give it the highest consideration if that's, if that scenario would work that way. I, if not that, then there need to be some display of recognition, honor to your, to your son. He was, he, the young people that he influenced, lives that he touched, uh, can't be replaced, but we gonna, we gonna do the right thing in his honor, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gault.
And Mr. Gault, I'll just say that I, I'm deeply sorry. I'm, I'm deeply sorry for your family's loss and I extend my sympathies, uh, on behalf of all of District C to you.
Thank you, sir, sorry.
Those are all the requests to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thompson, would you proceed?
Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, on the consent agenda, I believe that's where we are, right? We have, uh, several items, resolution one oh seven, one oh eight, and one oh nine, a motion to adopt the consent agenda to be in order.
So moved.
Second. They're moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Bradford. To adopt? There's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Well, we have the following resolutions on second reading and, and final passage. Resolution one oh two authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the city of Shreveport and Burgundy Oaks LLC for the water and sewer main extensions and related facilities to serve Burgundy Oak, Oaks, Burgundy Ridge, Unit Thirteen.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher. One oh two. There's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution one oh three authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the city of Shreveport and Burgundy Oaks LLC, uh, for the water and sewer main extensions and related facilities to serve Burgundy Ridge, Unit Fourteen.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Green and second by the chair. There's no discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution one oh four authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the city of Shreveport and Polestar LA Shreveport Bert Coons, uh, for the sanitary sewer main and related facilities to serve four twelve West Bert Coons Industrial Loop.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Flurry. There's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution one oh five authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the city of Shreveport and Enable Midstream Partners LP for the Brooks Road Water Main Extension and related, uh, facilities and to otherwise provide with respect there too.
So moved. Second. They're moved by the chair and seconded by Councilman Green. There's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution one oh six authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the city and Southern Home Builders Inc. for the sanitary sewer and water main extensions and related facilities to serve Newcastle Pines, Unit Number One.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilman Bowman and seconded by Councilman Green. There's no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven.
Uh, resolution one twelve to support a unified effort of the city council, all city administrative offices and departments, including sports ran, city court, and joint ventures with Shreveport Green and private individuals and businesses to significantly reduce litter in Shreveport and to otherwise provide with respect there too.
So moved.
Second. They're moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Butcher. There's no discussion, please vote. And motion carries with seven.
Resolution one thirteen recognizes and appreciates the life, achievements, and legacy of Cesar Carpenter, that is C.C. Antoine, on the second week in September each year, who as a Louisiana State Senator from Caddo Parish, introduced a senate bill in eighteen seventy-one to incorporate the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second. They're moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green. Discussion with Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman. Does he, Mr. Lee, are you?
Yes.
Come, come up for a second, okay? Mr. Chairman, I, I, I take delight in, uh, working with Mr. Lee, Craig Lee. I've been knowing him twenty-five years. He took on the great coordination of this annual C.C. Antoine Day, uh, this great attended event this year. I'm gonna present him with this, uh, resolution on Saturday, the seventh. But I wanted him to just give us some articulation of the, of the event that's, that's forthcoming.
Um, thank you guys for having the opportunity to speak. About ten years ago, myself and my sister started doing the Black History Celebration in February. And after a year, I said we needed to brand the celebration after an iconic African-American individual from Shreveport. And I thought about my uncle, Jowsdy Moore, founder of Moretown. But then I said it, it had to be somebody else that was even, uh, greater. And so we opted to go with Louisiana's third black lieutenant governor, Cesar Carpenter Antoine, uh, the architect who put the legislation together that incorporated Shrevestown into the city of Shreveport. And when you get into the life and legacy of this iconic figure, uh, it's unbelievable what he actually did in terms of establishing the first council form of government in the city of Shreveport, laying the foundation for the charity hospital, school board, the whole nine. And, um, uh, ended up purchasing over nine hundred acres of property where you see the General Electric Plant and the old General Motors Plant, that was all his property. And the enormous things that he did between Shreveport and New Orleans, he and his brother, um, started in the first army regiment, uh, mayor, um, down in what used to be called Brasheer, Louisiana, which is today, um, named, and I can't even think of the name of it right now, but it was, it was, um, changed, um, from Brasheer, uh, to what it is today. But that power is phenomenal. And next week, his, uh, great-great nephew will be in town, um, to celebrate at the NWACP Dinner, former professional football player and the only, like, the oldest living Antoine under that, uh, umbrella. And so these, this is one of the projects that we've worked on to create a C.C. Antoine Trail from west Shreveport, and that town is Morgan City, by the way, couldn't think of it, but from west Shreveport all the way into Allendale. And Bonnie Moore, um, is now working with us in terms of this being a part of the Choice Communities, uh, grant to basically have C.C. Antoine Square that becomes the heartbeat of Allendale. And as we were celebrating the day, um, Councilman Bradford at the grand opening or the ribbon cutting of the Southern Food Incubator, uh, C.C. Antoine's whole footprint is on that overall piece. And this gives us a chance to tell our story in a unique way because he impacted, um, the legislation that led to Brown versus Ferguson, I mean, Brown versus Topeka Board of Education through the Plessy versus Ferguson decision of eighteen seventy-six. Um, and so his, his impact is just enormous. And we just, um, are carrying the torch, the legacy. And, um, lastly, unfortunately, back in, I think, March, his great-great grandson, Ken Smith, was the gentleman who was murdered over in Wascom, Texas by the guy who stole his car and was, ended up, um, being killed by the Sheriff Department. So he won't be with us, um, this year, but, um, he had celebrated with us, uh, for the past several years. So it's good that, um, their families can now get together and celebrate with the birthday celebration, their reunion on an annual basis in Allendale.
So the date and the time is?
September the seventh, um, which is next Saturday, from twelve to seven o'clock. We do my, um, nonprofit, we do a free concert for the entire community, vendors, the whole nine, at C.C. Antoine Park. And we do that in partnership with the C.C. Antoine Masonic Lodge.
Thank you, Craig. And I'd be delighted to present you with this at, at the event.
Say that time again, the seventh, at what time?
Seven, from twelve to seven. Twelve to seven.
Okay. All right. Is that Councilman Bradford?
I just, well, we-
Chairman.
About what?
No, I was asking what that is.
Yeah, oh, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right.
I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Green?
Is that way you can get some heat in here, Councilman Flurry, now about to freeze to death, uh? See if we can get some-
It's all that veganism. Eat some cookies, you warm up.
I live during it, please.
All right. Mr. Thompson, would you proceed, please?
Did you call for a vote? Did you vote? Did we vote?
Did we pass it on?
It didn't? Will it talk so long, I watch you sleep down there? Wake up.
And that motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we're now into introduction of resolutions. The mayor's requested that resolution one eleven be removed from the agenda, a motion and second, and a vote would be-
So moved, it be removed.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green to remove. No discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, we have one resolution to be introduced. It's resolution one ten, authorizes the mayor to make application with the United States Department of Justice for a JAG grant.
Move for introduction?
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Bradford. They're moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Green.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into introduction of ordinances. Uh, Ordinance 107 amends the 2019 Airport Enterprise Fund Budget.
So moved.
Ordinance 108 amends the 2019 Ca- Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance 109 amends the 2019 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 110 amends the City of Shreveport's 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance, uh, 111 amends its, uh, city's, uh, 2019 Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 112 amends the city's, uh, Capital Improvements Budget, 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance 113 amends the 2019 Streets, uh, Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 114 amends the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance 115 authorizes the mayor to exchange surplus city-owned immovable property and all improvements thereon located at 3406 Velma Avenue, Shreveport, commonly referred to as the Forum of Fire Station 8. Ordinance 116 amends Section 58-117 and 58-118 of the Code of Ordinances of the City. Ordinance 117 is a zoning matter, zoning case number 19-362-C. It amends the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the south side of Greenwood Road, approximately 125 feet west of Broadway Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial District to I-MU Industrial Mixed Use District. Uh, Ordinance 118 is a zoning matter, case number 19-371-C. It amends the official zoning map of the city, uh, city's Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Greenwood Road and May Wood Drive from C1 Neighborhood Commercial Business District to I-1 Light Industrial District.
Move for introduction?
They're moved by Councilman...
Check.
Bradford and second by Councilman Green. Introduction.
Uh, we're now into ordinances on second reading and final passage. Uh, the first is Ordinance 78. It was vetoed by the mayor on August the 19th. A motion to adopt is in order, and it requires a two-thirds vote of the entire council to override.
So moved.
Second.
Now, what is this, what is this on?
This is, uh, adding Section 26-220 affidavit attesting that city contract was not secured through employment of payment of solicitor to Chapter 26 Finance, Article 6 Contracts, Division 1 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to requirements of an affidavit for city contracts.
And for, just for clarification, to uphold the mayor's veto is a no vote.
That's correct.
Yeah, if you voted no last time, you vote no this time, yeah.
Councilman, you don't have to. I'm just offering that.
I'm gonna vote for your next, I'm gonna vote for 92.
It's my motion.
It's motion by Councilman Nicholson.
Second.
And second by Butcher.
Four to three.
Uh, the motion is not adopted. The veto stands. Ordinance 92 amends Chapter 1 general provisions of the Code of Ordinances relative to misdemeanor offenses.
So moved.
Second.
There's no discussion? Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 94 was also vetoed by the mayor on August the 19th. It amends Section 26-274, execution of contracts associated with the purchase of the city's, uh, Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Nicholson.
If you voted no last time, vote no this time.
Four to three.
Uh, four is less than two-thirds, so the ordinance is not adopted. Uh, Ordinance number 99 amends various articles and sections of the Code of Unified Development Code.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Green.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bradford. There's no discussion? Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 100 amends Division 5 of Article 9 of Chapter 42 of the Code relative to food truck vendors.
So moved. Second.
Moved by the Chair and second by the Vice Chair. There's no discussion? Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 101 is an annexation ordinance, tag number 19-01. It will annex attractive land in Section 3 Township, 18 North Range, 14 West, and in Section 34 Township, 19 North Range, 14 West.
Second.
They're moved by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Butcher, and discussion with Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Mr. Weiner was right when he said that this city might not even last four generations, that we'll be bankrupt. We also have a situation on the Gulf Coast where a lot of that might be underwater, and we get repopulated with New Orleans and Baton Rouge. But I'd like to also draw your attention to deferred maintenance, in that we cannot continue to extend our boundaries to take in new infrastructure, whether it's a gift or not, that we are not currently prepared to pay for, and that we are not currently budgeting for the deference of that maintenance. Um, this is gonna pass, most likely, but we're addicted to annexation in this city, and we need to start rethinking the way that we are planning our city and the way that we are not growing our city, because we're actually spreading a population thinner over more land area that we cannot afford to maintain. Thank you.
Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, I do not necessarily disagree with the council lady. Um, and I think this one is a very great opportunity in the fact that, as I said earlier, it is contiguous to the already limits of the city, and we would actually be adding residents to the city without extending the boundaries of the city. Uh, on the both the south and the north side is city limits. This, this, this section just happened to be not annexed until the city's directly behind Trinity Heights Map Jesus Church, uh, adjacent to, um, uh, the river. It's, it's not a flood plain. It is, the contractor developers are going to put in all the infrastructure, like, you know, like we usually do, and I see it as a, as a very positive, um, annexation, especially again, without having to expand the, these resources of the city, just bring them into the, into the, into the circle of what is already we are maintaining.
Councilman Butcher?
I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Fuller to a certain extent on this, but I, I, I feel like that anytime we can bring, what is it, 80-some-odd homes, Councilman?
Yes, 82.
Into the city limits of Shreveport, especially when it's continuous, um, it's a win-win for the city. I, I've been following annexation since I was very young because my job depended on it, a former job that I had, and, and I don't agree with the way the city's annexed over the last 30 to 40 years. However, having said that, it's happened, and now we have huge holes all over the city that is surrounded by things that are outside the city. So, uh, you know, I believe as long as it's continuous, I'm not foregoing four to five miles outside the city and picking something up, but as long as it's continuous and we're already providing police and fire service to it, and we're already providing trash pickup, I believe that annexation is not a bad idea. Now, what Mr. Weiner and Ms. Fuller both are saying is, yes, I would like to see us have a plan for our adjudicated properties and to start filling back in the hole that's been left in the center of the city, but I also don't wanna stop development for the areas that, uh, that are concurrent, because to be honest with you, you know, Southern Trace is just as part of the city of Shreveport right now as A- Allendale or Highland, and that's just a fact, and it's not a problem that we created. Uh, like Mr. Weiner was saying, 30, I wish that somebody would listen to him 30 years ago, but we are just as part of the, a part of the city limits of Shreveport now as anybody else. So, um, I, I'm gonna definitely support this. I think anytime we can get, uh, a neighborhood like this that's gonna bring in 200, $250,000 homes, um, that can get them on the tax rolls, especially with the infrastructure that we may not have to replace for 30 or 40 years, hopefully, uh, the, uh, investment will be good for the city. So if it's, as long as it's concurrent, my policy is always gonna be to support the annexation. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller?
The area is going northeast, following Highway 70, I guess, that's 538 up to 1. Yeah, that's inside the city. We're talking about new development there, and what this is doing is encouraging more development outside of a loop that we've already had, and what's gonna continue to be said every time we see this is, well, it's kinda contiguous, but we're still, but we're still looking at deferred maintenance. That's the first issue. And the precedent you're setting with your statements right now is going to be the same byline that comes back every time we look at something that's just next to that, just adjacent to that, just adjacent to that, and just adjacent to that. At some point, we are going to have to have a real conversation about infill, and we're going to have to start looking at how we actually incentivize infill. What's gonna be more, what's gonna be better for your district, District A and my district as well, is looking at the areas where we've got snaggle teeth missing, where we can actually fill those areas in, because that is going to give us a better opportunity to recoup, to recoup revenue and have a stronger city. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, uh, Councilman Butcher?
Um, if you look at the map of North Shreveport and you run straight across from Cross Lake through MLK all the way across to about where, uh, uh, is it, uh, Old Morrisport Road comes in, Highway 71?
Highway 171.
That, it's 71, that picks up the Pine Hill Water System and then the Blan- Blanchard Water System. So that's as far north as it's gonna go, and then you got the river to the east.
Exactly.
So it's not going any further to the east. So this is filling in those missing teeth, I, I feel like, on this, on this portion. Now, if we were going north of, uh, Pine Hill Road, uh, uh, Highway 71 intersection, or going up Highway 71, then that would be a different story, but we're, we're within actually what I would consider if anybody drawing a map would say is in the City of Shreveport, so.
How close this gonna be to Belgium?
About 18 miles. But listen to me, but, but Councilman is right. See, along with this type of addition to the city comes the other in, uh, utilities that the city needs. We're gonna get, we're gonna get shopping opportunities, I think. We're gonna get, uh, additional services that, that will provide for the living of, of those residents, which we, which we need. I think it would be a great boost to, to the economic opportunities that will be forthcoming, because again, we, it's very, North Highland is very, is very populated. North Lake, we can't, we, we, we are, we are landlocked either, whichever northway we go. So this doesn't apply, I don't think, Council Lady, to your, to your concern, but I do, I do think and agree that if opportunity, we should try to redevelop and re, you know, just, just redo the inner city, inner, inner city neighborhood, but, 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 but that's something beyond our control in, in instances, because, you know...
We can control a lot if we want to.
You know, I understand.
I understand.
All right. There's no discussion? Please vote.
I understand.
And motion carries with six.
Ordinance 102 is an annexation ordinance, tag number 19-02. It will annex several properties along Merriweather Road in Section 33, Caddo Parish, into the city limits of the City of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher. 103. Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 103 is an annexation tag number 19-03. It will annex a portion of the Southern Loop roadway in Sections 19, 20, 29, and 30, Township 16 North, Range 13 West, Caddo Parish, into the city limits of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher. There's no discussion? Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 104 is an annexation ordinance, tag number 19-04. It annexes property on the Novo Carey Phase 1 subdivision in Section 8, Township 16 North, Range 13 West, uh, in Caddo Parish, into the city limits of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman, uh, Green, and I have discussion with Councilman Butcher and then Council Lady Fuller.
I was pushing the button, so. Anyway, um, this, this development is concurrent with the city. It's right behind Kush's Grocery, uh, at East, uh, Fornell Lucas and, uh, Ellerby Road. Uh, the, the developer wanted to be here today, but unfortunately, his wife had a medical emergency, and, uh, she's, uh, in the hospital, so he couldn't make it. But, um, I think it's gonna be a really nice upscale, uh, shopping area and some offices, and then possibly the second phase, maybe some residential up on the hill, so, um, and just to give the council a little bit of, uh, of where it is. It's surrounded by Acadiana Place, which was annexed in the 90s, um, the, um, Kroger Marketplace, all of that. So this is another one of your missing teeth, Council Lady. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller?
I'm going to agree that this is a missing tooth. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
There's no other discussion? Please vote. And that motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 105 amends the city's capital improvements budget, 2019 capital improvements budget.
So moved.
They're moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Flurry. There's no discussion? Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 106 amends and reenacts certain sections of Chapter 94 of the Code, uh, relative to u- utilities.
So moved.
They're moved by Councilman Green and second by the Chair. There's no discussion? Please vote.
James wants to have somewhere to go.
Going to my second job.
And that motion carries with seven. Councilman Green has moved more motions today than he's moved since he's been here.
I gotta get it.
That's all terms, you're right. That's all terms.
I gotta get to my second job, Mr. James.
All right. We don't have any other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, no, sir. No appeals, no tangents.
All right. Are there any reports from office boards on committee?
I just have a request.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we not have too many special guests at the September 10th meetings? I've learned that me and the mayor have a special dinner to get to after the meetings. We wanna get out on time.
You got it.
Is that okay with you?
But that, that depends on whether or not I'm invited to the special dinner.
Not only you're not invited, now you've lost your cookie from the screen now.
That's good. Let's, let's get this one closed.
Mr. Thompson, does that conclude your close report, sir?
That's right. We've already made it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mayor Perkins, do you have any additional communication?
Nope.
Over from the mayor's office. That was it?
No, no.
We headed that way now? Does any council member have been on this communication?
Well, I was supposed to wait till then to ask about that. I'm sorry.
Wait till they can't to make matters.
All right.
No, you're not.
Oh, yeah.
We have executive session.
No, I'm gone.
We have an executive session.
Uh-uh. Land speed record, dude.